Good evening. I will now call the regular town council meeting of September 21st, 2021, to order at 7 o'clock PM. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Counselor Beck.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our all.
Thank you, Counselor Beck, and thank you for your service to our country. In accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 20, please note that tonight's meeting is being both audio and video recorded. If anyone else present is recording the meeting, please identify yourself for the audience. Crickets? Otto, would you please take a roll call?
Certainly. Counselor Powers?
Present.
Counselor Kelly?
Here.
Counselor O'Brien?
Here.
Counselor Sullivan?
Here.
Counselor Clune?
Here.
Counselor Eager?
Here.
Counselor DiStefano?
Counselor Beck?
Here.
President Griffin?
Here. Thank you, Otto. I move to approve the agenda as outlined.
Second.
Second by Counselor Clune. Any conversation on the approval of the agenda? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. Counselor Beck?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Counselor Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin votes yes by a vote of eight in favor, zero opposed. Motion passes. Move over to the second page here, and I will turn it over to Counselor Beck to move to open the public hearing.
Move to open the public hearing relative to the proposed interdepartmental transfer of $19,750 from the town council budget to the law department budget.
Second.
Second by Counselor Clune. Public hearings now open. Anybody wish to address the council this evening? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Sullivan. Any conversation relative closing the public hearing? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yes.
Counselor Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Counselor Beck?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin votes yes by a vote of eight favors, zero opposed. Public hearing is closed. Public comment? There is no one in the audience, so there is no public comment. I'd move to approve the following regular and public hearing minute, uh, meeting minutes, uh, public hearing meeting minutes of August 16th to 21.
Second.
Regular meeting minutes of public hearings, September 7th, 2021.
Second.
And the special meet, uh, well, we'll just stop right there, so I'll just move those two at first. Seconded by Counselor.
Kelly.
Counselor Kelly? Any discussion on the approval of those minutes?
Yeah, just a point of information, Mr. President. I actually was not at the September 7th, uh, meeting, so I don't know if we can take those.
Separately, I actually, President Griffin, I was absent at the August.
But you, okay, so what we'll do is I'll, I'll withdraw my motion for the regular meeting minutes of September, uh, 7th, 2021. If you withdraw your second, George?
Yes, I'll withdraw my second.
Thank you. So we'll on to the regular, we do have the regular meeting minutes, um, and public hearings of August 16th, 2021.
Second.
Good. Any conversation relative to those? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. Counselor Beck?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Counselor Clune?
Abstain, absent.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin votes yes by a vote of seven favors, zero opposed, one abstention. Those meeting minutes pass. Move the regular, uh, meeting minutes and public hearing minutes of September 7th, 2021.
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Clune, Vice President Clune. Any discussion on those minutes? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. Counselor Powers?
Uh, abstain, absent.
Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yes.
Counselor Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Counselor Beck?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin votes yes by a vote of seven in favor, zero opposed, one abstention. Those meeting minutes pass. Moving on, move the approval of the special meeting minutes of September 13th, 2021.
Second.
Any conversation relative to those meeting minutes? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. Counselor Beck?
Abstain, absent.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Counselor Clune?
Abstain, absent.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Abstain, absent.
Counselor Griffin votes yes by a vote of five in favor. Zero, uh, zero noes and three abstentions. Petitions, remonstrances, and communications, gentlemen? Counselor Kelly?
Um, I just wanted to say that, uh, many of the things that our institutions in West Springfield have been weakened severely by the, uh, the COVID, and, uh, the American Legion is, is struggling to get reopened, and, uh, if there's anybody out there that wants to put their shoulder to the wheel, they could use some help.
Thank you, Counselor Kelly. Any further petitions, remonstrances, or communications? Counselor Eager?
Yes, I'm, I know we all want to be safe, and I understand we have a fear in it, in our community, but I find the mandates are abuse of our power, and I'm kind of disappointed that the Health Department passed the mandate, uh, with basically penalizing the whole town of West Springfield. I, I'm going to expose some weakness. I've been very depressed during this whole pandemic. One of the things that made me happy was seeing people's faces. I work in mental health, so. We're taking away our humanity by covering our faces, and we, we've been doing this for so long, and I'm just, I just want to express my disappointment. Many of us have started to get back to life. Many of us started to enjoy life again, and then we, we're forcing our citizens to put these masks over our face, and we can't see someone smile. It's sad. It makes me unhappy. Yeah, I'm sure it makes other people unhappy, and I just want to express my disappointment.
Any other petitions, remonstrances, or communications? Seeing none? Introduction, adoption, or resolutions? I'll turn it over to Counselor Powers.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, move that the town council adopt the proposed resolution urging the Massachusetts Trial Court and state legislature to immediately address health and safety concerns at the Roderick L. Ireland courthouse.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Kelly. Back over to you, Counselor Powers. Was this taken up in the Ordinance and Policy Subcommittee, or was it just discussed?
Uh, so it was taken up in the Ordinance and Policy Subcommittee, uh, meeting tonight. It did pass two to nothing. Uh, we were down a voting member. Um, so it did pass.
Thank you. Thank you for the, for that, and then I'll turn it over to you for, for the, uh, the actual resolution and then any, I know that you are the primary sponsor of this and certainly want to hear from you.
Yeah, and, and I'd like to thank yourself for, uh, being a co-sponsor along with Counselor Sullivan and Counselor DiStefano, and, you know, I'll read the resolution and then, um, so, whereas the Roderick L. Ireland Hamden County Hall of Justice in Hamden County has had health and safety concerns for over a decade, and whereas these concerns stem from the visible presence of mold on books, carpets, seats, flags, and air vents, in addition to two judges who share the same chamber, chambers, and both develop similar forms of ALS, and whereas the trial court and the Massachusetts Legislature have a duty to protect the people who are appointed, hired, and elected to serve, and whereas a former trial court administrator admitted in 2013 that the Roderick L. Ireland Hamden County Hall of Justice was the most severe alien courthouse in the state, and whereas the Roderick L. Ireland Hamden County Hall of Justice is one of the busiest courthouses in the state and was earmarked to study these concerns in 2016, but never made the trial court's 2017 master plan list to address these safety concerns and has not been discussed since. Now therefore be it resolved that the West Springfield Town Council demands the trial court and state legislature immediately address the health and safety concerns at the Roderick L. Ireland Hamden County Hall of Justice, and be it further resolved that the West Springfield Town Council demands raising and rebuilding of the Roderick L. Ireland Hamden County Hall of Justice to fully protect the staff, judges, trial court officers, those seeking protection and working under the legal system, and those being tried under the same, and be it further resolved that this resolution be forwarded to the Massachusetts Trial Court in both the House of Representatives and the State Senate in Boston.
Second.
Thank you. Anything further, uh, Counselor Powers?
Yeah, so I, I guess, uh, just by way of background, how, you know, how this came about, you know, obviously, uh, with COVID, uh, the Counselor Eager just touched upon and the, the effects that it's had on people over the last 18 months, that in-court trials went to Zoom. So for a period of 18 months, uh, the Hamden County Courthouse didn't have the, oh, 13 to 1,700 visitors that it normally has a day, and the 550 staff or more that are employed there, not counting, um, you know, the, the attorneys that work there, uh, weren't there on a daily basis. And at the very end of August, when people started resuming their work in the courthouse itself, as the resolution states, mold, invisible presence of mold was found on carpets, seats, flags. It was found on books, and if anyone is interested in seeing the actual photographic evidence, you can go to the Hamden County Bar Association's website. There is a link on their Facebook page. There's dozens of photos that staff have submitted. Um, Register Sheriff, uh, Cokely Rivera has also posted something on the Hamden County, hamdendeeds.com website, uh, just with some pictures of mold, uh, that is present in the registry. Uh, due to that, you know, on that day in August, uh, the jury was sent home by the clerk of courts, and District Attorney Galuni removed his staff, uh, from being staffed in the courthouse, you know, to more temporary offices where some of their full-time offices are held. Sheriff Coche also stepped in and said that at the time, for a period of time, he did not want his inmates being in there. Uh, the holding cells, there's, those holding cells are some of the, um, worst conditions in the, in the courthouse, and whether you're being tried under the system or being protected, it should not matter when it comes to health and safety. Uh, and then Sheriff Cokely Rivera, uh, also removed her staff from the registry, uh, mainly working out of the West Springfield office, uh, but also remote. And like the resolution said, this goes back well over a decade at this point, uh, when the first letter was penned by the clerk of courts, Laura John Tile, and it had everything to do with that, environmental and health issues that are present. And if you go and look at those pictures that are readily available, it's deplorable, and as part of my job helping you purchase a home, when you do an inspection on a property and you find mold in the attic, you remediate it. First thing that you do. You're worried about your health and safety. Well, after looking at those pictures, which are way worse than what a general home inspection on a residential purchase would be like, the trial court's response was to put 52 dehumidifiers in the building and say that they tested the air quality and they're not over levels to be concerned about. The problem with that is, that's arbitrary. You, you don't treat mold with dehumidifiers. You remediate. I haven't heard of any actual action being taken at the courthouse with those visible presence of mold on the books, on the flags, on the microphones, on the seats, and I'm sure that something was done, but I don't think it's to the standard that it should be. And, you know, when I saw the action being taken by individuals that are elected by the county, and when I looked at what West Springfield has to endure when it comes to the fact that if we're looking for protection under that system, you have to go to Springfield and the Roderick L. Ireland Hamden County Hall of Justice, I thought that we need to step in solidarity, and we need to support, you know, the DA, the sheriff, and the registrar. And with that being said, I, I reached out to the town of, the city of Springfield and the town of Agawam, and I believe Agawam had, it had new business on their agenda last night. I don't know how that vote went. I know that Springfield will handle it at their first meeting in October, but the goal here is to get the trial court to admit that this is an issue. You know, the, the head judge of the trial courts said that she wouldn't sit in the same office, that those two judges, Judge Kumar and Judge Boyle sat in. That's an issue. In 2013, the trial court admitted that it was just one of the most severe alien courthouses in the state, where nine years later, that's an issue. And, you know, the fact that we put our neighbors, our loved ones, and our constituents in that every day with those conditions, you know, I think this is the right thing to do for those people that, that can't speak out on this or don't have the time or aren't aware of the issues. So bringing this to light, um, you know, putting this on the trial court, I think is the best step to take. Hopefully, it's a regional matter. Um, we don't have the benefits of using other district courts, at least for the time being. You know, and I think the goal here, after talking to some of our counselors, is the fact that, you know, we're, you know, we're looking to keep the courthouse where it is. You know, I think you have, you know, there've been various elected officials in the area that have talked about, you know, temporary relocating the courthouse on a more permanent basis to the Eastfield Mall, utilizing some of the Mass Mutual Center. I think District Attorney Galuni is going to start utilizing other district courts in the area, but that allows a great opportunity to raise and rebuild where the courthouse currently stands. It allows West Springfield to still have ease of access to it, and, you know, in my opinion, and, you know, hopefully all of yours, this is something that, you know, uh, we can all get behind and, and show support, especially for those workers and judges and the family members of the judges, uh, and workers that are concerned about their loved ones' safeties every day. So thank you for your time and, um.
Thank you, Counselor Powers.
Counselor Clune?
Um, just wanted to let people know I'm abstaining from this vote. I used to work at the Springfield courthouse with Judge Kumar and Judge Boyle, uh, but I'm currently employed by the trial court at a different location, so I will abstain out of an abundance of caution.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice President Clune. Counselor Kelly?
Uh, I think in this age of heightened medical awareness with the COVID and everything, which is an airborne respiratory disease, uh, that to any public building that is infested with mold should not be used until that problem is solved. And, uh, you know, we're, we're treated out here in Western Mass as a redheaded stepchild by the courts in Boston. They, uh, if it's outside of 128, they're not going to worry very much about it, but, uh, that's been the way for years. Springfield was always a very busy courthouse, uh, for all, both civil and criminal matters, and yet they had about one-third of the staff that they had in the Suffolk courthouses. And, uh, I, I don't think we, we should, uh, let that condition stand. I think we have to support these, uh, people. I, I wouldn't want anybody to go into a building that's, uh, full of mold, whether it's a courthouse or a schoolhouse or, or what it is. I, I think that, uh, those things need to be fixed and done so promptly, and it shouldn't be a political decision.
Thank you, Counselor Kelly. Counselor O'Brien?
So who's responsible for maintaining the building?
Ministry of Courts.
I can't answer with exact certainty, but I believe it would be the trial court system.
Okay, so they're responsible for mitigating this problem?
Yes.
So they're, they don't care, is what you're saying?
I haven't asked anyone for official comment.
So you're assuming they don't care then?
I think their inaction over 10-plus years would show their indifference to the Hamden County courthouse, in addition to the fact of their response as it relates to the newly discovered mold in August or at the end of August that required the jury to be sent home. And I think that I would share that opinion, even though I can't speak for the sheriff, for the district attorney, or the registrar, because this action follows theirs, so I would think this is a point of solidarity.
It's a disconnect to me to, to say that there's a verified problem. They're saying that, that the place is full of mold, and that the people who are responsible for it, which are the state in some fashion, have turned, turned their back to it, and it, it takes a resolution from the town of West Springfield to, to make them do an about-face?
It's sad, but I think that we need to, I think that we certainly need to say something at this time.
Counselor Eager?
So I think most of us are in agreement that mold's bad. Um, the thing is, and I, I, I talked to Counselor Powers about this. I had severe, uh, I had a little reluctance to sign on. The main reason is I like the current location. I think it provides a sudden border from the casino to prevent the, the, uh, any negative effects of the casino entering our community. It puts a police presence between us and West Springfield, giving, uh, West Springfield greater protection. It's close to us. It's a good location. And whether they gut and replace it, uh, let them renovate it, or, uh, build new, I'm putting into the universe that I strongly prefer the current location of the courthouse, and I hope other pe, other elected people, uh, officials and people in power have that same opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Eager. Any further comments? Counselor Clune? Counselor O'Brien?
So I'm just, uh, I'm trying to understand that thi, this is going to accomplish what? What is it that, what, what's the goal? To do what? To knock it down and build a new one? To, to, like he said, gut it? What, what is the goal?
So the resolution asks for the immediate raise and rebuilding of the courthouse, but I think the goal is to, through public awareness, through multiple municipalities within the county of Hamden, to come together and show solidarity in the fact that, yes, this has been an issue for over 10 years. Yes, there have been complaints from elected and appointed officials within and outside of the courthouse, and yes, I think to go back to what we discussed a few minutes ago, the trial court is obviously not focused on Hamden County and the courthouse itself, so we need to be put on their radar. What would require that? If in 2013, this was admittedly one of the most severe alien courthouses in the state, if the head judge of the trial court system won't even sit in the same chambers that Judge Kumar and Judge Boyle sat in, and we have individuals that are from within the trial court agreeing that the conditions here are deplorable in one way or another, yet we can't even make a master list to have this studied. So, you know, the wheels of justice move slowly, but, I mean, they got to start moving sometime, and I think that this is a great, a great opportunity to give that, you know, give that vehicle push. Hopefully, it gathers some steam, picks up some speed. The governor's admitted that this is an issue, but he kicked it to the trial court. Trial court can't kick it anywhere else, so I think it's our time to stand together.
But isn't it in the trial court's best interest to handle this problem if it's an acknowledged worst courthouse in the state? Why in the world would they ignore it then and not do anything? What, what's in their best interest to do that?
Probably the cost of rebuilding a courthouse that was improperly built in the 70s. I can't speak for them, but it's a great question. You know, why haven't they addressed this? And at this point in time, with all the articles from, you know, The Republican to Mass Live to the Boston Herald, to the Boston Globe, every article that's been written on this, I've yet to see a comment on the issues about that. Why hasn't something been done? And they're either avoiding the question, or no one's asked, and I find it hard to believe that no one's asked. But if no one's asked, you know, let it be known that hopefully Springfield, hopefully West Springfield, hopefully Agawam, and hopefully the district attorney, the sheriff, and the registrar are enough to put this on someone's radar, and if they're not, I think we have larger issues as a county out here.
I want to, but, I mean, if it's not already on their radar, that, that's the thing I, that there's something missing. It's, obviously should be on their radar, but it's not. So who is "they" and why are they, I mean, the place is full of lawyers. Why don't they sue these people for their, for a unhealthy environment?
Yeah, there, there is a lawsuit actually out there suing the trial court for this.
So that, and that is to, who, who are they suing, is what I'm saying? Who, who is "they"? Who's the bad man in this or the bad group?
The trial court.
Who is that? Who?
The trial court.
But who are they? Who is the trial court?
I mean, if we want to place individual people, I think Paul Carey is the head of the trial courts. Uh, there's, there's also the head of building and maintenance for the trial courts. Those are people named in the lawsuit. You know, I mean, unfortunately, when you're the figurehead of a department or a, a part of a governmental agency, you become the figureheads. Is it their fault? No. I don't think they've been around for 10-plus years. I don't think they've been purposely ignoring this, but they would be the trial court. I mean, I think that's, that's pretty clear. I think what's also pretty clear is what we're asking in this resolution. So I, I don't really know, you know, where that confusion comes from, especially when you have over 550 workers at the trial court of Hamden County concerned about their daily lives and their livelihood and their health. We've had families grieve for lost loved ones for, you know, I mean, very eerily similar forms of ALS. I, I don't, you know, I don't, I don't understand what you don't see with the problem in this. I think that's, I think that's possibly a larger concern, and maybe there's some concerns that you share with the trial court that make people like me draft a resolution like this, because we need everyone else to know. It's not being paid attention to.
Hold on, George. I'm asking simply because you're asking that, I'm an elected official for the town of West Springfield, and you're saying this is an acknowledged problem in the state. Everybody knows this is a, is the worst courthouse in the state, and it takes a resolution from West Springfield's city council, which has no power to do anything over there, to, to tell them that they have the worst courthouse in the state. To tell who? That's what I ask, because I'm not a lawyer. I don't hang around the courthouse. And why aren't they doing it? You say there's a lawsuit filed, and it's, but it's not their fault because they, why aren't they, why didn't they do something yesterday? They put dehumidifiers in, and that apparently wasn't enough. So who, who has the power then to, to give you what you want, to, to do what everybody claims they want, other than they can't do it themselves, the trial court? It must be a larger political issue then, or they would do it, wouldn't they? I, I would assume?
I mean, I find that to be a rhetorical question because of the issues at hand here. They should be doing something. That's where this resolution comes from, yeah. They should be doing something, absolutely. They have master plans. Every year, the trial court's in charge of the courthouses. I mean, I, I don't, I'm pretty sure I've answered those questions in fullness. Maybe I, maybe I haven't been clear enough, but I thought I had. Trial court's in charge of it. Every year, they have a master list. It's clearly marked in the resolution that there is a master plan for the trial courts. We're not on there for safety concerns. If you looked at the, the lawsuit that's been filed by the registrar, and I think her name's Judith Poole, uh, Judith, Judith Pool, you know, they, they claim that, you know, we at least need to remediate and address the issues, which I, I think I've said.
But that's my point, is if, if we're not on that list, then how can you say that it's that dire of a circumstance if it's not on that list?
Have you taken, have you taken the time to look at the pictures?
My question is, again, if we're not on that list, the list has a list of priorities, so it's acknowledged that the courthouse is the worst in the state. By whom? Because it's not enough to get it on that list. Which is worse than that's on that list? Is there some place that's on that list that shouldn't be?
I will.
It seems like there's a disconnect between what's going on.
So I will try and maybe make a comparison that doesn't equate to this problem, or it does. Someone in your district feels that a street needs to be paved, and it should be at the top of the list. Someone else thinks that it's not that large of an issue. I, I don't, I don't, I don't know how to, you're asking me questions to ask me to almost represent the thoughts and feelings of the trial court. the thoughts and feelings of the trial court. That's not my job. So I think if you want to ask those questions, I would certainly be happy to ask them with you. We can certainly reach out to the trial court and ask those same questions to the trial court, because, like I said, those have not been answered. Those need to be answered, and they're not being. So I think those are great questions.
So, George, this is the second time you'll speak?
Yes, it is. For years, the political football in Massachusetts has not been kicked into our court. We've been chronically underfunded on courtroom staff and monies, as well as other parts of the state. The people within 128 get a certain type of response. The people outside that are in the hinterlands, they don't get the same response. I think it's a political football. We need to ask our legislators in Western Mass to get on the sticks, but you have to realize that the state of Massachusetts, everything happens around inside 128 gets much more attention than really, really bad situations that are outside of that area. And I think we're trying to get a political groundswell going to get the right thing to be done here. I don't think anybody's saying it's the wrong thing to fix this thing, but if the people who have control of the purse strings, and that would be the chief administrative judge and his staff and the legislature, don't get behind it, there's very little chance that it's going to happen.
Counsel Cologne?
Counsel Griffin.
Thank you, Vice President Cologne. I stand, I was elated to get a phone call from my fellow Counselor Powers, who took it upon himself to get this ball rolling. So that being said, I have known and did know as a special friend Judge Boyle, and watched him perish through this, or could be attributed to this. Judge Comer, I did not know as a friend as much as Judge Boyle, who was a dear friend. I got to meet Judge Boyle back in 1987. That's how long ago I knew Judge Boyle. But having said that, the trial court had some problems as far back as the late, early '90s, when I worked back there again, under the district attorney, William Bennett. And I remember distinctly the issues that were raised back at that time, and, you know, literally breathing was an issue. There was a problem back then, as I remember. But, you know, as we sit here tonight, those issues have become, again, life-threatening from a standpoint of mold, et cetera. Being in the insurance business for over 25 years, one deals with mold on a daily basis. Mold is not, is not remediated by putting 52 dehumidifiers in a building. It's remediated by putting tarps up and getting rid of the mold with decontamination. And then dehumidifiers may be involved. There also may be some air movers involved, et cetera. But having people within that facility with active mold is dangerous, very dangerous. I stand firmly with my fellow counselor. I stand firmly with Diego Looney. I stand firmly with Sheriff Kochi. I stand firmly with the registrar of deeds, Cheryl Cokely Rivera. Yes, this may be something of a resolution that we do not have a lot of power with, and I would, I would agree with that. But shall we stand with them, arm in arm, to try to facilitate someone in Boston to get their heads out of their rear end and start to focus on the Hampton County system? And this is what this resolution is all about. Bottom line. Do you stand with them? If you do, vote yes. If you don't, vote no. No one will hold you accountable if you did vote no. But I stand with them firmly, and I've watched them. And if I'm voting my conscience, and it becomes somewhat emotional, I think of Judge Boyle in my head. What a wonderful individual he was, and he sat and died there. That's unbelievable. So I stand firmly, and I appreciate anybody that would stand firmly with, with my fellow Anything further? Counsel Beck?
Just on your talk, you mentioned the word accountability. I mean, this isn't, I mean, I'm going to support this, but how did this happen? A building that's 50 years old, did someone not turn the air conditioner on? Like, how did this much mold spread that fast? So, I don't know. I'm just wondering. I just want to make that statement. Maybe somebody somewhere will hear it and investigate it and make it part of this whole process, but I'll be supporting this.
One more. That was my point, is exactly. How do you, somebody has to be accountable for this. I mean, it's like the soldier's home. Somebody is, is responsible for the building. It's not like it's a new thing for them to hear this, and they're simply saying, "We don't care." I find it just impossible that that, that it's allowed to go to this stage, and these actions have to be taken for something that is clearly and verifiably happened. That's my point in asking the questions. Since he wrote the resolution, I asked him those questions. I find it impossible. I can't ignore Western Mass that, that much and say, "Well, we just don't care. It's Western Mass." It seems, it's impossible. But thank you for bringing that up.
Anything further? Let's go to a vote. Counsel Beck?
Yes.
Counsel Eager?
Yes.
Counsel Cologne?
Abstain.
Counsel Sullivan?
Yes.
Counsel O'Brien?
Yes.
Counsel Kelly?
Yes.
Counsel Powers?
Yes.
Counsel Griffin votes yes. By a vote of seven in favor, zero opposed, one abstention, the motion passes. And moving on, appropriations, human resources.
Thank you, Mr. President. The HR committee did meet this evening. We reviewed a few recommended appointments and the salary of the town clerk and clerk of the council, which the last item, I'll draft a letter and include everybody on the recommendation of the HR committee. And I, and I should note that as I go through these and move these recommended appointments, that each one was vetted through the town department heads. There were no issues, and they were all approved unanimously by the HR committee. So having said that, I'll move to approve the appointment of Andy Cox to the Conservation Commission with a term to commence on September 22, 2021, and expire on September 21, 2024.
Second. Counsel Cologne? Vote of the committee?
As I indicated, each one was approved unanimously.
Any further, any further comments? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. Counsel Powers?
Yes.
Counsel Kelly?
Yes.
Counsel O'Brien?
Yes.
Counsel Sullivan?
Yes.
Counsel Cologne?
Yes.
Counsel Eager?
Yes.
Counsel Beck?
Yes.
Counsel Griffin votes yes. By a vote of eight in favor, zero opposed, the motion passes. Back to you, Chairman Sullivan.
I move to approve the reappointment of Daniel G. Sullivan to the Board of Registrazos with a term to commence on September 22, 2021, and expire on September 21, 2024.
Second.
Again, that was, as I indicated, these are all unanimous by approval by the subcommittee.
Any further discussion on Mr. Sullivan? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. Counsel Beck?
Yes.
Counsel Eager?
Yes.
Counsel Cologne?
Yes.
Counsel O'Brien?
Yes.
Counsel Kelly?
Yes.
Counsel Powers?
Yes.
Counsel Griffin votes yes. Eight in favor, zero opposed, the motion passes.
Okay. And before I do the last one, I want to thank everybody, and not just on our list tonight, but everybody who volunteers for West Springfield. That's what makes it a very special place and helps us accomplish all the things we want to do, not only as elected official, but officials, but as a community. Having said that, I'll move to approve the reappointment of John Wees to the Board of Assessors with a term to commence on September 22, 2021, and expire on September 21, 2024.
Second. Counsel Cologne? Any further discussion on Mr. Wees? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. Counsel Powers?
Yes.
Counsel Kelly?
Yes.
Counsel O'Brien?
Yes.
Counsel Sullivan?
Yes.
Counsel Cologne?
Yes.
Counsel Eager?
Yes.
Counsel Beck?
Yes.
Counsel Griffin votes yes. By a vote of eight in favor, zero opposed, the motion passes. Budget?
So budget did meet this evening. We discussed the interdepartmental transfer, which we'll be addressing shortly. And we did not discuss the Southwick Animal Shelter intermunicipal agreement, and we will discuss that shortly.
Great. Ordnance and policy?
We did meet tonight. We discussed the resolution, and that was all that was on.
Traffic and safety. Chairman Eager?
We approved a lighted beacon on King Street. I mean, King's Highway. King's Highway, sorry.
You approved what?
A lighted beacon on King's Highway.
The crosswalk.
Yeah, it's a crosswalk.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Pedestrian beacon.
Utilities, they did not meet this evening. No one finish business? Turn it over to Counsel Beck.
Okay. Move to approve the proposed interdepartmental transfer of $19,750 from the town council budget to the law department budget.
Second. Second by Counsel Kelly. Take it up in committee?
We did take it up in committee. We voted one in favor, two opposed.
One in favor, two opposed. Okay. Further discussion? Any further discussion on this? Seeing none? Let's go to a vote. Counsel Powers?
No.
Counsel Kelly?
Yes.
Counsel O'Brien?
Yes.
Counsel Sullivan?
No.
Counsel Cologne?
No.
Counsel Eager?
No.
Counsel Beck?
Yes.
Counsel Griffin votes yes. By a vote of four in favor. Four opposed, the motion fails. Moving on, intermunicipality, intermunicipal agreement. Did we take any action on that? I know that Attorney O'Brien Scott had some thoughts on that.
We had just requested a continuance because the chief of police is still discussing with Southwick another term to add to the agreement, so.
Great. Thank you. So we, we'll, we'll put that on our next agenda?
Yeah, just a motion to continue it to the next.
Okay. Thank you. Clerk Fazell will remember that for sure. He's got it right in the back of his head already. Moving on, and speaking, Clerk Fazell, Counsel Sullivan?
Yes, I moved to approve the appointment of Otto Fazell as the clerk of the town council with a term to commence on September 22, 2021, and expire on June 30, 2022.
Second. Second by Counsel Cologne? Did we take this up in subcommittee?
We did. It was unanimously approved based on the recommendation.
Any further comments? Seeing none? Let's go to, would you like to comment?
I was just going to say a thank you to Otto for stepping up when Sue's retired and taking good care of us, and you're doing a great job. We, I know, we all appreciate it. I just wanted to say thank you.
Otto, Otto is, yeah, so Otto's helped considerably during this, and we talk often. He has kept us afloat with Tony O'Brien Scott by way of formality and conciseness as well. But I think he does a tremendous job. Any further comments from my fellow counselors? Seeing none? Let's go to a vote. Counsel Beck?
Yes.
Counsel Eager?
Yes.
Counsel Cologne?
Yes.
Counsel Sullivan?
Yes.
Counsel O'Brien?
Yes.
Counsel Kelly?
Yes.
Counsel Powers?
Yes.
Counsel Griffin votes yes. By a vote of eight in favor, zero opposed, the motion passes. You're with us, like it or not, Otto?
Thank you, Counsel Burke. I appreciate your confidence.
Move to adjourn? Oh, Counsel Kelly?
I'd like to ask Otto, now that he's all confirmed for his new term, if he could get in touch with the student representative from the high school and see if they can make a few meetings down here. I think they brought us a lot of information.
Yeah, so we will get with the superintendent and have that kicked off through, I'm sure, Assistant Superintendent Paul, who may have some, some ideas with that as well. He has been actively involved, so no problem. So I move to adjourn? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Aye.